Board of Education Policy 0162. The Board of Education of the Borough of Bound Brook has caused notice of this meeting to be posted in the Board Office in a Bound Brook High School and mailed or faxed to the Courier News, Bound Brook Borough Clerk, South Bound Brook Board of Education, and any person who has requested individual notice and paid the required fee. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Gorsky, a roll call, please.
Certainly. Mr. Bell. Mr. Dawson.
Here.
Ms. Kazino. Mr. N. Calcaterra. Mr. Zupko.
Here.
Ms. Musson. Mr. Minhas. Ms. Hi.
Here.
Mr. Velmer. And Mr. Januzzi.
Here.
You have a quorum present this evening.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I will welcome Ms. Patty back to the stage or the floor or whatever we're going to say today to deliver our ethics training for the year.
I want to thank you for having me tonight. I also want to start with congratulating you yet again on receiving your Carol E. Larson Master Board Certification. And just for the benefit of your public, that is a tremendous accomplishment and requires a lot of effort and training on the part of the board. So how do you get there? You get first your board certification, which means you have to have 16 training hours over a four-year period. That include the majority, at least seven members of your board and the superintendent. So that you got your board certification a couple of years ago. You continue to get your Master Board Certification within two years to do an additional 10 hours of training. So that is 26 hours of professional development that your board, that you have done so that you can serve your community and your children better. And that really should be commended. There are not too many districts within the state that get the master certification. So I applaud you and congratulate you because that is a fabulous feat for you. And your community should be proud. Your kids will benefit without a doubt. So we're doing ethics tonight. And ethics is a balancing act, right? What you can and what you can't do. But we can't start any ethics presentation without our standard disclaimer, which basically says, we, this presentation tonight is for informational purposes only. It does not recommend, it does not represent a legal opinion or legal advice. If you have, if you need a legal opinion or legal advice, please reach out to your board attorney. This is really just about different things that you can do, can and can't do. So the School Ethics Act was found, was approved in 1991. Sometimes words escape me, I apologize. But I just want to read this. This is important. And I know that you've done some of this about ethics at your reorg meeting. But I think this statement says a lot. "It is essential that the conduct of members of local boards of education and local administrators hold the respect and confidence of the people. These board members and administrators must avoid conduct which is in violation of their public trust or which creates a justifiable impression among the public that such trust is being violated." And it's that last sentence that I think, you know, it creates a justifiable impression. One of the standards that the School Ethics Commission uses in determining if an ethics violation has occurred is what we call the reasonable person standard. It's not always what you, the board member, think is ethical or not. It's what they feel a reasonable person might think. And that's, that's a, you know, I don't know if that's a concept that's used anywhere else. But this, the School Ethics Act is really there to preserve the public's trust and confidence that you are managing the district with integrity and their students are benefiting. The School Ethics Act, to achieve that, the School Ethics Act listed some basic minimum ethical standards that board members must abide by or school officials at all times. They also, the Act also has a list of disciplinary options that is available to the School Ethics Commission to make sure that board members are abiding by their, these ethical standards. And really, the Code of Ethics and the School Ethics Act really does help define and identify things that, you know, some of the roles of a board member. And I think that's helpful. There are two different levels of provisions provided by the Act. The Code of Ethics and the mandatory training requirement only apply to school board members or charter school trustees. The list of prohibited acts and the disclosure statements apply to all school officials. And that includes some levels of administrators as well as charter school trustees and board members. And also us at NJ SBA have to abide by the list of prohibited acts and provide our disclosure statements every year. The School Ethics Act appointed or provided for a commission to enforce the Act. That commission is comprised of nine members appointed by the governor, two three-year terms. So of those nine members, two are school board members, five are non-school officials, and two are school administrators. Again, they're appointed by the governor. And as you see in the slide, there are a few vacant seats. You know, we're not quite sure what method the governor uses, but it is his decision. So the financial disclosure statements that all school officials must provide, there's two levels. A new school official has to do it within 30 days of being sworn in or them starting their position. Thereafter, you have until April 30th of every year to provide your disclosure statements. It also, the School Ethics Act also identified mandatory training that is required of school board members. And these have not really changed significantly except for Governance 1. Right now, the last two years, you have to complete Governance 1 within 90 days of being sworn in. Otherwise, you're found to be out of compliance. Governance 2 and 3, you still have the full year to do that. Governance 4, you have to do the first year every time you are reelected. And, you know, we have many options. It's no longer where you have to be in person. We have live virtual, we have self-paced online, we have in-person options, all sorts of stuff. So if you need your Gov. 2 and 3, we also offer that in Atlantic City. There are, one of the things that the School Ethics Commission can do is issue an advisory opinion to a board member. So what is an advisory opinion? An advisory opinion is where a board member is concerned that an action that they may take would be considered a violation. So they ask ahead of time to the School Ethics Commission whether they feel, whether they, you know, what their determination is on that action. And, you know, they provide all the information. The School Ethics Commission will issue an advisory opinion. They will, they can make that advisory opinion public if six members of the commission approve that. If they make the advisory opinion public, they scrub it of all identifying information. And you'll see that in a few of, in a few of the advisory opinions that we list. So you don't know who it is or what district because then you might be able to tell who it is for the advisory opinions. And again, you have to, the board member has to ask for that information, that advisory opinion, before they take the action. And they have to listen to that, to that, whatever that opinion states. It, you know, their board members, some board members have said, it's an advisor, it's an opinion. I don't have to follow it. Well, if a police officer gives you their opinion that a certain action will get you a ticket or get you arrested, and you do that action, you really shouldn't be surprised if you get arrested or you get a ticket. Similarly, if you ask the advisory opinion and you don't follow it, if an ethics complaint is filed, it's likely that your penalty will be harsher because they asked, you asked, and they told you, and you said, yeah, I'm not going to follow that. And these are advisory opinions that, and one of the things we do, this, this training is updated every year so that it reflects the more recent opinions and ethics complaints for review. Keep in mind that if you go to the School Ethics Commission, which is on the NJ DOE website, you can go year by year and look at all this information. And it really is, even with these, these are several that we found are pertinent. I will tell you that if you see the number that starts with A, A represents an advisory opinion. Those numbers are linked and you go ahead and send out this email, this PowerPoint tomorrow so that you can go in and click. And everything that's in light blue, the numbers are all linked so that you can find that. But for example, I'll just go through the first one. The, a school board member asked if they could review the resume of candidates before voting on the superintendent's recommendation for that candidate. And the School Ethics Commission said, it's not really in their jurisdiction to determine whether you can or cannot review them. But if your district, if that happens in your district, if you are allowed to review, the role is very limited. You can only look at it for observation or assessment. And you have to keep in mind that the superintendent is the only one responsible for making a recommendation. So even if you look at it, you can't act on anything unless the superintendent makes a recommendation. And then if you look at the fourth one, which sometimes, which is helpful, the bottom one, A0724. So a board member co-owns a business in town, and they want to participate in fundraising requests to support the PTO and clubs through hosting events at the, hosting events and advertising. The School Ethics Commission said, as long as you are hosting those events and advertising to the entire community, it's not likely a violation. If you own, if you, if you're only advertising through the school email system or to only to students, then it's potentially using your position as a board member to better your, your business. So as long as you do fundraising and advertise to your entire community, you know, like Chipotle and all those places do that. They put, you know, even on their website. Then, then you likely, likely would not be found in violation because you're not getting directly any benefit just from your families in town. And these are another, another page of advisory opinions. And these were all opinions released in 2024. But just to go through one, A0424. This board member's adult children are voting members of a nonprofit board that has ties to the district. And they're asking if they can participate in matters related to that nonprofit. And the School Ethics Commission said that you could consider the nonprofit as you would an employer. Right? So your children, your children are voting members. You should really recuse yourself from any kind of discussion or votes regarding that nonprofit. And that's how far into the weeds they sometimes go. And again, these are all links that you can, that you can look up and when you have time, read into them. They are quite interesting at times. The other thing that the School Ethics Commission can rule on is an ethics complaint. An ethics complaint can be filed by any person, anywhere. You don't have to live in Bound Brook. They can come from anywhere. And when you stream your meetings, it brings a whole new perspective to that. They have to allege that a violation of the School Ethics Act has occurred. If they do that, they have to file the complaint within 180 days of the occurrence of what they're saying happened. They have to provide a specific section or tenet of the Code of Ethics that they say you violated, that the board member violated. And they have to provide the factual evidence that, for the School Ethics Commission to consider. The School Ethics Commission does not have a paralegal. They do not go out, they do not do research. They only look at the case based on the information you provided or the person complaining provided. Now, board members have the opportunity to respond. So it's not like it's completely out of your hands. But, you know, those are what they need to do to file complaints. And that information is all on the School Ethics Commission's website. And again, they use the reasonable person standard. If a reasonable person thinks would be led to believe that the Act was violated, the board member will be found in violation of the School Ethics Act. Basically, if it looks like a conflict, it is a conflict. The next thing that the School Ethics Commission had, their School Ethics Act identifies, is the series of penalties that is available to the School Ethics Commission for each level of a complaint. Because if you have the School Ethics Act and you have a list of things that board members can and can't do, and what happens if they do the things they're not supposed to? You have to have some method to make sure that board members and school officials are living up to the School Ethics Act and the Code of Ethics all the time. So the first level that's available to the School Ethics Commission is a reprimand, which is simply a rebuke by the governor, I'm sorry, by the Commissioner of Education. The next level is a censure. So that is a formal rebuke or formal disapproval by the commissioner, followed up with a resolution in your local board meeting that identifies, that's, that's read and passed and, you know, voted on, that identifies a board member has violated the Code of Ethics. The next level is a suspension on any amount, you know, on whatever amount that they, that they feel is sufficient. So what does a suspension mean in real terms? If you're suspended from, by the School Ethics Commission, that means you are, become a member of the public for that period of time of the suspension. You can't sit on the dais, you can't go into executive session. You don't get access to any information that members of the general public don't, you know, if they, the members of the general public get it, then you will get that information. And so, you know, that's, that's significant. The final level, which doesn't happen too often, is they can recommend removal, complete removal as from, of the school official from the board or the district or whatever. We talked about, there are 10 tenets of the Code of Ethics. And they are there and board, school officials are expected to abide by them at all times in their official capacity. They have, they, you know, they can't forget about the Code of Ethics. And these also, the tenets help identify different roles that board members can and can't do. But to go through them kind of quickly and briefly, and, you know, feel free to ask a question at any time. You don't have to wait till the end if you have a question. Because this is like an info dump, but go ahead.
So the only thing I will say is a reminder, if you're going to ask a question, just call for the microphone so that it gets picked up for the recording.
All right. So as I said, there are 10 tenets. Tenet A is, board members, school officials have to uphold and enforce all laws of the State of New Jersey and the State Board of Education. And anything that pertains officially to school districts. When you look at the slide, above is the Code of, the different tenet, the code. And the standard is a suggested factual evidence that somebody must submit when they're saying that a board member violated A of the, of the Code of Ethics. It's helpful. Again, that information is also on the Commission, the, the School Ethics Commission website. And when we get to B, B talks about, you will make decisions in the best term, in the best interest of the educational welfare of all your students, not just some, not just the constituency that may have elected you. Once you are sworn in, you represent every student in Bound Brook. Board, one of the, the functions, one of the four functions of a board is policymaking. And that's what this tenet talks about, that you will focus your attention on policymaking. And that's, that's, that's the level where you are, not the day-to-day operations of the district, but actual policymaking. Board makes the policy. The administration sets the regulations and sets how those policies will be implemented. And this one, we like to use a lot, that you will carry out your responsibility to, not to administer the district, but with your fellow board members, see that they are well-run. You hire your superintendent as the educational professional with the expertise and the training to run the district. And so you need to let your superintendent, not, not that it's a problem here, but, but, you know, you need to let the superintendent run the district. And then you can hold the superintendent accountable through the evaluation process. And that's really where that goes. This one is, you only have authority, you recognize that authority rests with the full board. And that, you know, part of the Open Public Meetings Act. You have authority when you're sitting at a noticed meeting with a quorum present. And that's the only way a board member can take action. You can't take action, you have no authority to take any action individually away from the board table. And that includes the president. The president have any addition, they have additional duties, but they, they don't have any additional authorities than the rest of the board. And sometimes that's a hard one. And I know when I was on my town council, I had authority to go in and talk to the police chief and expect that they talked to me, which after being on the board just seemed wrong. Because like, what do I know about being a police chief? Like, what do I know about being a superintendent? I don't have the training, I don't have the knowledge or the experience. So it, sometimes it's hard for, it's a hard concept for board members. You're not going to surrender your individual judgment on, your independent judgment on anything. And you're also not going to use your position for the gain of yourself or your friends or your family. This is confident, this is about confidentiality. You will hold all things confidential until such time that they're not confidential. Because by, which means like in an executive session, periodically, you may release the minutes if that, whatever you discuss was no longer confidential. Things that are done in committees, although because it's not a public meeting. So you might consider them confidential until they show up on a board agenda for discussion. Or they're in the, in the board, you know, the report of the committee. And, and, you know, if by releasing confidential information, you can do real harm to people. You will only appoint the best qualified personnel after the recommendation of the superintendent. So you can only vote on the superintendent's recommendation. And you know, you can vote your conscience, but if, if there's a recommendation that isn't made about a staff member or anything else, you have no authority to just come in from left field and say you want to do that. If it's not recommended by the superintendent, the board can't take action. You're supporting and protecting your school personnel and the proper performance of their duties. You know, you can't go in the grocery store if somebody comes up to you with an issue. It's really not appropriate for the board member to kind of chime in and either negatively talk about a staff member or positively. You just have to support them and, and, and listen to what the person is saying. But, but that's important. Like, you are the employer and you need to support them with their, what they're doing. And, and, and if they're not, that's under the superintendent's purview to take care of them. And this is kind of like the, almost the chain of command. Any complaints that you get, you refer to your superintendent. And, and you only act on those complaints at a public meeting, a notice meeting with a quorum, a majority present, a quorum present, after the, if there's a failure of an administrative solution. You have to let the administration do what they need to do to investigate in, in any, any situation. If, if it's, it's not the board member's job to do that investigation or to do anything regarding that other than let your superintendent know that an issue has come up. I mean, I mean, ultimately, these 10 tenets identify the different lanes and the different walls of a board member, what they can and can't do. So these are cases related to the Code of Ethics. And there are some interesting, I hear, there are some interesting in here. And just, just so you know, some of these cases have been appealed. So the determination might change. And as a board member, just, just know that if the commission has a, recommends a penalty that is automatically reviewed by the Commissioner of Education, who has the option of agreeing, not agreeing, or changing or amending. And then after the, the decision is made, if it's upheld by the commissioner, board members always have the opportunity to appeal any case. And you can appeal the violation itself or the penalty, and/or the penalty. So there, there is a process. It's not like somebody files something against you and you're out of the whole thing and you wait. That's not, that's not how it works. It is a legal proceeding. But just to go through some, one of these, and just so you, you see what, what it kind of, what, how to read them, they are linked, excuse me, they are linked so that you can go in and read the full case. Now, the, the ethics complaints are not necessarily scrubbed of identifying information. The advisory opinions are because that should pertain, if anybody has a similar issue, they, they can look that up and see how they think the, the commission would, would go, would, would rule on that. So in C24, the second one, they, a board member was involved in the ongoing efforts of an HIB and Code of Conduct complaint about her child. And it was on her child's record, and she wanted it reversed. She called the superintendent, the board, individual board members, and the board attorney to further her personal agenda. And because this is, the, the School Ethics Commission ruled that the action is not related to her, her duties. And reversal, and the reversal directive is actually asking for them to, you're, she's trying to administer or, you know, run the schools. And the, the action, and by reaching out to other board members, to the board attorney, is something that is not available to, to your general public. They, they can't do that. They can't call the board attorney at will. But they found that this, this board member was in violation of three tenets. C, which you see on, you can't really see, on the bottom. C, D, and E. C is, you're, confine your action to policymaking. You, D is you won't administer the schools. And E is that authority rests with the board. That board member was issued a reprimand, which is the first level of, of penalty. This is an interesting one because there, in this case, a teacher was to be discussed in executive session. The board member sent a text to that teacher stating that the board member could accuse the board president and, and see, and superintendent of malfeasance if they did not, if that, asking the staff member if they received, if they hadn't received a race notice. The board member made a personal part. The School Ethics Commission said the board member made a personal promise that they could take action if the teacher had not received a race notice. School Ethics Commission further ruled that by sending that message, the board member acted beyond the scope of, of being a board member. And that, that action could potentially compromise the board. They found that the board member was in violation of the Code of Ethics of, of tenet E, which is that authority rests with the board at a notice meeting with a quorum present, not by one board member kind of going rogue and asking these questions. And they recommended a reprimand. So a, when, when it says recommended reprimand, it's still on, on the cycle. Could either be changed by the Commissioner of Education or it's being appealed. This one I like to point out. This one I like to point out because this is, shows that it's not just new board members that have errors in judgment or misjudged the situation. This is a board member who was on the board for 15 years. And they ruled that they took inappropriate action that was beyond their role as a board member. Basically, the board member, there was an employee, there was an employment action about an employee that the superintendent was recommending. The board member went to the employee's house, picked up a letter from the employee to distribute to the board, gave it to the BA to distribute to the board, and told the BA not to give it to the superintendent. And so that really was outside the scope of their job. And, you know, to further complicate things, when that issue came up for discussion in executive session, they did not recuse themselves. So there's many levels. And this is a board member who's been on the board for over 15 years. By then you would think they kind of, they kind of know better. But, and so they did find that the board member was in violation of six of the 10 tenets of the Code of Ethics. And they're recommending a suspension of 60 days. So just think about that. It's like a 15-year board member, you would think that, that they would realize this is not what you should be doing. All right. This is a campaign one that they, it's again, it's not the fact that they made a campaign video, they made a campaign video identifying themselves, a board member, as a board member, wearing a school ID. And so had, you can still do a campaign video, just don't say you're a board member and don't wear school district-related either ID or a t-shirt with the district on. And that even though they used, and we'll talk about the disclaimer in a bit, even though they used the disclaimer, what they were, you know, kind of, they used it, but it really wasn't, wasn't used appropriately. And they did recommend a censure of this board member and that of three of the 10 tenets. You know, this is, the board member, the School Ethics Commission said, the board members stood the chance of benefiting for themselves because they had formed a team. And they wanted to do things that, that, you know, the video said, talks about things that they could do if you elected these two people, whatever, whatever that might be. So again, you have to be mindful of what it is that you do. You have to remember that as a board member, you have to, or a school official, you have to abide by this Code of Ethics at all times. And as an elected official, you are held to a higher standard. And that's really, you know, you choose to be either elected or appointed or however that goes. And you have to acknowledge that, that as an elected official, especially school board, your school official, you're held to a higher standard. There's, I talked about recusing if there's a, on that list of prohibited acts that you can and can't do. Really what a recusal signifies is that the board member has a legal conflict and they can't participate in the discussion or the vote. An abstention does not reflect that. An abstention you can abstain for numerous reasons, but if you have a legal conflict, then you need to recuse yourself. And if you're not sure if your conflict is legal, reach out to your board attorney because they can help you, they can, you know, guide you in what that is. Here's the list of prohibited acts. And really, again, it talks, says recuse yourself if there's a benefit of any of these, if any of these apply to you or your immediate family. For things like if you, any financial gain, if there's financial involvement that may impair your objectivity. An example might be if you work for an insurance broker that works with school districts, and it may not be your district, but you have inside knowledge, you should probably recuse yourself or at least have that conversation with your, with your school board attorney. You know, in the list of other considerations, H just talks about, it's not a conflict if what you're voting on or talking about is, is not only, you don't, it's not only a gain to you or your child. And an example of that would be if you're approving field trips and your child's going on that field trip. Well, the whole class is going on that field trip, so your child's not getting anything extra that anybody else isn't getting. So, you know, so you can feel comfortable that on field trips or school dances, whatever it is that you vote on, that you can, because your child is not getting anything extra The School Ethics Act also defines what a benefit is. And the definition is that it, that if there's a direct indirect advantage, profit, privilege, or gain to you or anyone in your family, that would be considered a benefit. And again, the determination that the School Ethics Commission uses is if a reasonable member of the public would think that you're, you were not being objective. And so again, it's the reasonable member standard that applies more than your own personal thought. And the one example of this is, and again, this is a school official, this is a superintendent or acting superintendent that, so it's not only board members, right? Everybody, everybody has this. But this acting superintendent, it was her first meeting as being acting superintendent. There was a list of 160 people for, to be school substitutes in the school. Her son was on that list of people. She recommended that list be approved. Ultimately, she probably should have read through the entire list before it went there. But they felt that it was, it did create, you know, a view that she may not be objective because her son was gaining financially. And so it was, she was reprimanded for that by the, by the Commissioner of Education. These next few slides talk about how the different ethics rulings on conflict and benefits. Looking at my time. So we go through there. And really just be mindful, like this, the, well, I'll go into the second one just because to kind of show you what it is. A board member, a board member voted on two resolutions to name a school building in honor of an elected official who was also her boss. And the elected, also her boss. And so they're, boss of 20 years. And the School Ethics Commission said that the longstanding relationship could create a justifying impression that the independent judgment or the objectivity of that board member was, could be impaired, right? Because it's your boss. So if you name school buildings after her, you might get a better position. Or if it's an elected official, then you might win, you know, for something else, it might help you. And so they, the School Ethics Commission did recommend a, recommend a censure of that, of that board member. Through advisory opinions over the years, the School Ethics Commission has, continues to define what a family member is, who a family member is and what that relationship is. You see who an immediate family member is pretty straightforward, but then you get into who's considered a relative. And then you, it goes, and these all come, came up from either advisory opinions or ethics complaints. So again, everything's very fact-specific. And in the, what I handed out your BA has, is our, an actual list of who's considered conflicted. We call it being conflicted. We used to put it on the slide, but it's so, you can't really read it. So you just have to be mindful of what you can and can't do if you have a family member as listed here on, in your, in your, you know, as when you're a board member. So we all know that as a board member or a school official, you can't hire a relative of a board member or your superintendent. However, they could already be here when you get on the board. Or in the case of a superintendent, it could be that their family member, they worked side by side or in two different grades or whatever it was, and then that person's made superintendent, then they don't have to fire their relative. And you don't have to not take a seat on the board because your relative is here. You, it, it just limits what you can do as a board member in different authorities that you have. The administrator can't exercise any direct or indirect authority over their family member. A board member cannot take part in the employment, any employment matters concerning your superintendent or any supervisor in the chain of command from your relative to the superintendent. So that limits what you can do. If it's a teacher, then it might be the principal all the way on up, that as a board member, you would have to recuse yourself and not be part of that discussion. And as a board member, if you have a family member, if you're perchance looking for a new superintendent, you can't take part in that search. You can't take part in the selection or vote to hire the new superintendent. And further, you can't do any evaluations of the superintendent. But, yeah, you know, there's other things you can do as a board member, but it is, you have to be mindful. And if you're not sure if your family member qualifies or your, you know, relative qualifies as, under this, just talk to your board attorney. So collective bargaining is another part of this. And this chart shows the different levels that you can, you can participate in or not. If your family member or relative works in the district and is a member of the union, you can't be part of the negotiations and you can't be part of the ratification vote. If it's yourself or your family member and they don't work in this district, but they are part of the same union, then you can't be part of negotiations. But after the salary guise, the memorandum of agreement, and the top compensation package has been agreed to, you can take part in the ratification vote. And then if the relative is in the district and is not part of the same teachers' union, then you can participate in negotiations. Then there's a few opinions, an ethics complaint decision and an advisory opinion about campaigning and endorsement by your local union. So in the first case, it's recommend, you know, if you received an endorsement from your local union, it's recommended that you not take part in negotiations your first year on the board. But thereafter shouldn't be an issue. And then if you're endorsed by a, by a local union or the statewide union, it's not necessarily a conflict, but if you got, if the endorsement comes with a financial contribution with the implication that you're going to vote the way they want, then you should not take part, you should recuse yourself from that discussion. The other impact that having a family member in the district has on a board member is your committee assignments. And these different advisory, one's an advisory opinion and one's an ethics complaint. The difference is advisory opinions start with A and complaints start with C, just so you know what the difference is. If you're a board president, you know, the board president selects the committee chairs and the people to be on the committee. If a board president has a family member that works in the district, they can't select the committee chair or the, be on the committee or the committee members of any committee that would remotely touch the employment of their family member. It's just pretty straightforward. So if, you know, but it does hamstring the super, I'm sorry, does hamstring the board president because there are things that they can't do. If you're a board member, you can't, so the president can't assign the committees remotely touching them. A board member can't be on any committee that remotely touches the employment of whatever it is that their child, of their family member, be it negotiations, be it personnel, or anything that has that, that touches upon them. Then the other thing that's come out recently is board members using the advice of counsel defense. And so there are now things that must be, that you must do if you, if a board member's going to use the advice of counsel defense. And the advice of counsel defense doesn't make the violation go away, but it may make the penalty less. So you could still be found in violation, just the penalty might be less. But if you're going to do, use that defense, you have to, these are things you have to do. You have to ask for and get the advice and follow the advice before you took the action. You, the person you ask for the advice from has to be qualified and knowledgeable to do that, right? Right? You can't just go ask somebody on the street corner to do that. You have to go ask, you know, an attorney for that. And that you gave all the important information pertaining to that, to that person beforehand, and then you actually comply with the advice that they gave. Keep in mind that it won't make the violation go away, it may make the penalty less. We, you know, board members, you're here volunteering. And I, I remember as a board member, a lot of volunteering. Just because you're a board member doesn't mean you can't volunteer. You can volunteer. You just have to be mindful of a few things. You have to be mindful of your involvement with staff and students and how many, and how frequently you're in the building. You don't want to give direction to staff and students, and you don't want to have, be in the building so much that people think you're actually managing the building. And I see your next coming in. These are just some different, or it might be a violation or not. A volunteer coach could be a violation because you're giving direction to staff and students. However, if you're going in to do Read Across America or to, you know, be a class parent in, for a party, that should not be, that likely would not be a violation. And then the last sticky wicket, we're almost done, so I apologize to all your, is social media, right? You never lose your First Amendment rights, but you have to be mindful of your position as a school, as an elected school official. And so when there is-
Hi. For all of our guests that are coming in, just please be advised, we're in the middle of a presentation, so if you could just keep your voices down, that would be awesome. Come on in. Thanks, everybody.
Not too much longer. But just, just be mindful of what you're posting. The School Ethics Commission looks at the substance, context, and content to determine if a reasonable person would think that you were acting or your comments were made in your capacity as a school board member. There's, they recommend using the disclaimer. This disclaimer is provided by the School Ethics Commission, but you don't have to use this, but you can say that, you know, your comments are made as a private citizen, do not reflect any board member or the board or the district. That's essentially what you have to say. But it's not a get out of jail free card. If the School Ethics Commission looks at the content, context, and substance, you could still be found in violation. That's loud. And so we go with, there's several questions and answers here. Essentially, I've kind of just said that, that just use the disclaimer. That's really helpful. And then real more guidance. Don't, if you have a campaign account or any, any social media account that identifies you as a board member or your campaign account, once you become elected, it's not appropriate to use the campaign account anymore because the general public doesn't know the difference.
So just want to say welcome to everybody who's here for the general board meeting. We're just finishing up some training, so if you could keep the side conversations to a minimum, that would be great. Ms. Patty Reese here is delivering some training to the board, so thank you.
Yeah. And we're almost done. We're doing ethics training, which is, which is a lot. So just don't use something that identifies you as a board member. Don't be, and we strongly recommend you not be an administrator of any social media account because likely they're private and likely you, you get to make decisions on what stays and what doesn't. And if there's, if there's more than, if there's a majority- And if there's, if there's more than, if there's a majority of board members part of that private group, it becomes problematic. But if you like or share something from your personal account, it's, and it doesn't, and it can't be confused with board business, you likely won't be found in violation. And as I said, we're done. We've spent the last almost hour talking about as a board, board members, what you can and can't do. And I want to remind you of what, there's so much that you do. There's so much of an impact and that this is a volunteer job. And I want to, you know, at least thank you for your time and effort. And again, for this board and getting your master board certification really does show your interest in improving the lives of your students. So if there's any questions and I know you need to move on, feel free to reach out to me by email or call me. And we'll go from there.
Great. Thanks very much, Patty.
It should be.
Leave it on.
It's up to you. I'm with you. Just you leaving on, it should be fine.
Yeah.
But let's see what happens.
Okay. Just yell if it's a problem.
All right, I gotta run. There's somebody who needs, who has a wheelchair, so I'm gonna bring him around to the elevator and bring him around this way, so I'll be right back.
Very nice. Thank you.
All right, everybody. So welcome again to our board meeting for tonight. Sorry to keep you waiting and I'm happy to see such a full audience. The good news is you don't have to listen to me read the Open Public Meeting Act because we already did that. And we're gonna jump right over to Dr. Freeman and his superintendent's report.
Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to our May board meeting. It is very exciting to see so many people in the audience. And knowing that we have all these wonderful awards to give tonight makes it a really special night. At this time, we'll start with our Students of the Month. I call forward Dr. S. for Lamont and Lamont Annex.
Good evening. Congratulations to Nathaniel Vargas. Nathaniel, you want to come up?
Come on down, Nathaniel.
So Nathaniel, Miss Sanchez's class. Nathaniel is a big brother to his little sister. Nathaniel enjoys exploring the learning centers, learning the alphabets and numbers and singing songs. His favorite hobby is building with wooden blocks and playing with puzzles. Congratulations, Nathaniel.
Yay, Nathaniel. Yay, Nathaniel. Another round of applause for Nathaniel.
Okay, congratulations to Rob, Robbie Barnham. Robbie, are you here? Right here. Come here, Robbie.
Way to go, Robbie.
Okay. Robbie's in Miss Jorge's class in kindergarten. Yeah, Robbie's favorite school subject is art and gym. His favorite hobbies are coloring video games and riding his brother's bike. When he grows up, he wants to be a YouTuber or an art teacher. Congratulations, Robbie.
Say hello in the mic, Robbie. Congratulations, Robbie.
Hey, congratulations to Ashton Ram Bargan. Ashton? Ashton's in first grade, in Miss Woods's class. Nathan, I mean, Ashton has a sibling named Nathan. His cousin Tristan, who he, who is like a brother to him. His favorite school subject is reading and art. His favorite hobbies are drawing, dancing, swimming, crossword puzzles. And his career plans is he would like to be a pilot in the Air Force, just like his mom, pilot.
Wow.
Awesome. Congratulations, Ashton.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to call Ms. Cahas up for our Lafayette Students of the Month.
Our second grade student of the month is Angeline Torres Rosso.
Yay, Angeline.
Angeline is from Miss Amorice's class. She has one sister. Her favorite school subject is art with Mrs. Ackley. And she loves gymnastics. And when she grows up, she wants to be a teacher and teach gymnastics after school. Congratulations, Angeline. You ready?
Another round of applause for Angeline.
Our third grade student of the month is Jadiel Cornejo Dionisio.
Jadiel.
Jadiel is in Miss Juarez's class. He has three siblings. He's, his favorite school subject is math. He likes to play soccer and football after school. And when he grows up, he wants to be a soccer player and an engineer. Congratulations, Jadio.
Another round of applause for our Lafayette Schools Students of the Month. And next up for Smalley School, we have Mrs. Winter.
Congratulations to our fourth grade student of the month, Bethany Salazar. Bethany comes to us from Mrs. Coker's class. She has one brother. Her favorite subject is science. She likes to play sports, mostly soccer, and she wants to be a policewoman when she grows up. Congratulations to our fifth grade student of the month, Samuel Duque Kalindo.
Come on down, Sam.
Samuel doesn't have any siblings. His favorite subject is math. His hobbies are to play tag with his friends and play soccer. And his career goals when he grows up, he wants to help his family with their farm. And he also would like to go to college.
Another round of applause for Sam.
And our sixth grade student of the month is Xavieran Wilson. Xavieran is coming to us from Mr. Melo Sergo's class. Very, let's see his video. He has one sibling. His favorite subject is ELA. His hobbies are playing basketball and talking basketball with me when he remembers to watch the game the night before. And his career goals are to be an NBA player or to do something in real estate.
Another round of applause for all of our Smalley Schools Students of the Month. And next up from Community Middle School, we have Dr. Santa Cerma.
Hello, everyone. The seventh grade student of the month from the Community Middle School is Ismary Rodriguez Escona. Ismary was nominated by her teacher, Mr. Sanders, has two siblings. Favorite subject is ELA and hobbies are chess and piano. And when Ismary grows up, would like to be a dermatologist.
Another round of applause for Ismary.
The eighth grade student of the month from the Community Middle School is Mia Balladeras. Mia was nominated by her teacher, Mr. Lay. Also has two siblings, congratulations, two siblings. Favorite school subject is social studies. Favorite hobbies are volleyball and soccer. And when grows up, Mia wants to be, go to college and become a hairstylist.
Dad is coming down. Another round of applause for our Community Middle School Students of the Month. And next up, Mount Brook High School, Mr. Smith.
Crusader Citizen of the Month Award. Our first recipient, we have Juan Montoya Polta.
Juan has one sibling, an older sister. His favorite subject in school is math. Juan enjoys playing soccer, listening to music and spending time with his family. And his future career plans include becoming a professional soccer player or studying something related to sports. Congratulations.
Another round of applause.
Our next recipient, Joel Oriana. Joel has one sibling, or two siblings, one older, one brother and one sister. His favorite subject in school is the Avid Program and AP Modern World. His favorite hobbies include playing soccer and hanging out with his friends. And his future career plans include studying counseling and psychology at college or university. Congratulations.
All right, families coming in. Another round of applause.
Our next recipient, Bianca Hardy. Bianca has four siblings, three sisters and one brother. Favorite subject in school is history. She enjoys playing volleyball, shopping with friends, and traveling. And future career plans include CRNA. CRNA?
CNA, maybe?
I don't know what that means, but congratulations. It's a good career choice.
It's a career.
And last but certainly not least, we have Madison Lambertz. Madison has one sibling, Sean Lambertz, a brother. Favorite subject in school is English. Madison enjoys reading, skiing, and hanging out with her dad. And her future career plans include studying either psychology or psychiatry. Congratulations, Madison.
One last round of applause for all of our students of the month, as well as their parents, because we know they wouldn't be where they are without you. Okay, at this time, we have some special guests and special honorees. We're going to take a minute to honor and recognize our governor's educator of the year from each school in our district. These outstanding individuals have demonstrated exceptional dedication, not only to their students, but also to their schools and the broader community. Each honoree was thoughtfully selected with input from their building principal, fellow educators, and parents, reflecting the high regard in which they are held by the school community. We are proud to celebrate their remarkable contributions this evening. In recognition of their achievements, each educator will be invited forward to have a few words said and receive a beautiful trophy as we capture this special moment. To our honorees, I just want to tell you how deeply grateful I am for all the hard work that you do, the care that you show to our students, your colleagues in the community. We really appreciate you. Let's all give them a round of applause. Okay, at this time, I would call up from Lamont School, Lamont Annex School, Dr. S.
Hey. Introducing one of my many dream teams that I have over at Lamont in the annex, Mrs. Melo Sergo and Mrs. Penya. Please come on up. I have had the pleasure of knowing and working with this amazing team for the past six years. From the very beginning, it was clear that Mrs. Melo Sergo and Mrs. Penya are a perfect match. Dedicated, compassionate, and always smiling. Their strong bond, shared vision, and genuine love for their students shine through everything they do. It's no surprise that both parents and staff nominated them for this recognition. They truly are a dream team. Mrs. Melo Sergo is a pre-K teacher at the Lamont Annex Elementary School. She's been teaching there for seven years. She loves working with young children and believes we should always look at what they can do, not what they can't do. Mrs. Melo Sergo cares a lot about her students. She helps them learn and grow in every way, academically, emotionally, and socially. She also works closely with Mrs. Michelle to make their class a fun and welcoming environment. Mrs. Penya, known as many as Mrs. Michelle, was born in the Dominican Republic and moved to New York City when she was six years old. She's been happily married for 27 years, is a proud mother of three children, and a new grandmother. Mrs. Penya has worked in our school for 20 years. For the past six years, she has worked with preschool students in Bound Brook. Mrs. Penya is kind, hardworking, and cares deeply about her students. She works closely with Mrs. Melo Sergo, helping in fun and creative ways. She also speaks Spanish and often helps translate her families, making sure everyone can understand and feel included. Congratulations to Mrs. Melo Sergo and Mrs. Penya. Mrs. Penya, thank you.
Okay, next. I'm so into the ceremony, I almost forgot. Next, from Lafayette School, let's call Ms. Cahias.
Our first educator of the year is Mrs. Stephanie Ackley. Ms. Ackley is a dedicated art teacher whose passion for art has enriched the Bound Brook School District for over 13 years. She consistently goes above and beyond to inspire her students through creative instruction. In addition to teaching second and third grades, Ms. Ackley contributes significantly to the school community by designing event decorations and leading arts initiatives. She designed, sketched, and painted our sensory hallway mural with our students, adding color and joy to Lafayette. Ms. Ackley highlights her students' talents through local and national art contests. Recently, eight pieces were selected for Somerset County Show. And out of thousands of entries in the national contest, 25 of our students participated, nine of whom were selected for publication. Ms. Ackley's dedication to fostering creativity and student growth makes her a respected role model and a valued member of the Bound Brook School District. Congratulations, Stephanie. Our second educator of the year is Ms. Renee Jacobs Grauer. Renee Jacobs Grauer is a bilingual district speech-language pathologist committed to delivering culturally responsive and comprehensive services to students across Bound Brook School District. She has worked with students from pre-K through grade three and grades seven through 12. Known as Mrs. Renee, she leads engaging personalized speech sessions that support both academic and social communication. She helps students build real-world skills and guides them through transitions between grades and schools. Mrs. Jacobs Grauer builds strong connections with students and families. Her bilingual skills help her support Spanish-speaking families, and her expertise in language development allows her to accurately identify language needs and provide effective services. Respected across Lafayette for her professionalism and compassion, Ms. Jacobs Grauer supports student growth with her clear communication, empathy, and a strong dedication to their success. Congratulations, Renee.
Can we take a picture? Are we taking pictures? Oh, okay. From here, from there? Oh, sorry. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. Another round of applause. And next up from Smalley School, we have Ms. Winter.
So I'd like to bring up and honor Gina Petruski as the educator of the year for Smalley School. And this is why. We are so proud to recognize Ms. Petruski as Smalley Elementary Schools Governor Educator of the Year. Dedication and heart. Ms. Petruski brings STEM to life through engaging hands-on lessons that spark curiosity and excitement. Her inclusive STEAM schedule invites all students to explore and grow, not just those in gifted and talented program, ensuring every child feels capable and inspired. A valued collaborator, she partners with colleagues to design high-impact lessons that elevate learning for all. Her classroom is a vibrant space where ideas flourish and students are eager to share what they've learned. Beyond the classroom, Ms. Petruski brings meaningful connections, greeting students warmly each morning, and guiding them as a newspaper club advisor, where they find their voice and share their stories. Ms. Petruski, your positivity, your creativity, and your unwavering commitment leave a lasting impact on our school community. Congratulations. We are so proud of you.
So we're going to come over here and take a quick picture. Ms. Musson. Right over there. Oh, you're not finished yet. Okay. Go ahead. Yeah, you can bring them both out. That was my mistake.
And additionally, we are so proud to celebrate our Service Professional of the Year, Mrs. Lee Eaton. We are so proud to celebrate you tonight. A well-deserved honor that reflects your deep impact on our students, staff, and school community. Mrs. Eaton is the heart of compassionate Smalley. Through her counseling, she creates safe, supportive spaces where students feel seen, heard, and valued. She's a trusted adult students turn to for guidance, reassurance, and hope, helping them build confidence and resilience. A dedicated teammate, Mrs. Eaton collaborates closely with staff to support students in need, developing action plans that lead to meaningful growth. Her care also extends beyond the school, providing families with essential support through programs like the Backpack Program. Mrs. Eaton sees the good in every child. Her kindness, creativity, and belief in each student makes her an irreplaceable part of our school. Congratulations, Mrs. Eaton. We are so grateful for you and proud to celebrate you this evening.
Congratulations. And next up from Community Middle School, we have Dr. Santa Cerma.
It's an honor and a privilege to present Mrs. Kim Pradatis as the Community Middle School Representative for Somerset County Teacher of the Year. For the past 11 years, Mrs. Pradatis has inspired countless students to believe in themselves and achieve their academic goals. With expertise in special education, science, and math, Mrs. Pradatis brings diverse teaching strategies to the classroom and is able to address a wide array of students' needs. Outside the classroom, Mrs. Pradatis plays a key role in developing and maintaining a positive climate and culture at the Community Middle School. Mrs. Pradatis is the Sunshine Club Chair and makes sure all our staff's life events are celebrated. She organizes multiple themed luncheons, breakfasts throughout the school year, which staff have an opportunity to gather, have fun, and develop a family-like atmosphere. Ms. Pradatis supports our school's athletic programs and attends games and events along with her family in support of her current and former students. She's the seventh grade class advisor and schedules numerous fundraisers and organizes extracurricular activities, such as the upcoming sixth and seventh grade move-up dance, students-to-science class trips, and the seventh grade trip to medieval times. Please join me in a round of applause for Mrs. Pradatis in recognition of her unwavering dedication and service to the families of Bound Brook. And that is our family at events all the time. Please join me in celebrating Ms. Hennessy Picado as the Community Middle School Representative for Somerset County Ed Specialist of the Year. Ms. Picado is a graduate of the Bound Brook High School, a graduate of Montclair University, and is currently working on a master's degree in social work at Montclair. Ms. Picado serves as a teacher associate at CMS and is tasked with assisting and facilitating instruction for our multilingual learners in math, science, and social studies. As a fluent Spanish speaker, Ms. Picado is able to bridge the language gap that ensures all students have a full understanding of classroom material. Ms. Picado has an immeasurable impact on students' learning and has helped to break down barriers that in the past have been a point of struggle for both student and teacher. In addition to her classroom responsibilities, Ms. Picado assists with guidance mediations, parent conferences, and after-school family events. Through her collaboration, enthusiasm, and genuine care for the success of each student, Ms. Picado's efforts have helped develop and foster a more inclusive and supportive environment for our Spanish-speaking families. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Hennessy Picado in recognition of her outstanding service to our community.
Another round of applause. Last but certainly not least, we have Mr. Smith from Bound Brook High School.
Good evening again. On behalf of Bound Brook High School, the Bound Brook High School family, we are proud to recognize two extremely important members of our school community as they are honored with this prestigious New Jersey Governor Educator of the Year awards. First, we celebrate our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Joelle Smith, whose dedication and passion have made a lasting impact on our students and school. Joelle Smith is the epitome of what it means to be a dedicated educator and role model at Bound Brook High School. As a dynamic mathematics teacher, she inspires students through engaging lessons like scavenger hunts and gallery walks, creating a classroom environment that is both rigorous and welcoming. Her passion for math and genuine care extend beyond the school day, with her students often choosing to spend time in her room before and after school. Outside the classroom, Joelle's impact is equally profound. She founded and expanded the school's volleyball program, teaches college-level courses that offer students free dual enrollment credits, and juggles roles as a coach, tutor, professor, and mother with relentless energy and dedication. Within the math department, she is the senior leader and go-to mentor, generously sharing her expertise, resources, and support. Known for her meticulous organization, Joelle's over-planning and grading routines are matched only by her unwavering commitment to excellence. For her leadership, creativity, and deep-rooted passion for teaching, Joelle Smith is more than deserving of recognition as Teacher of the Year, and we are proud to have her represent Bound Brook High School as the recipient of this prestigious honor. Joelle, you are truly limitless. Congratulations. Next, I would like to introduce our Educational Specialist of the Year, Ms. Deb Paulson. Ms. Paulson serves as the Bound Brook High School Student Assistance Counselor. Her unwavering commitment to supporting our students while being in success has truly made a difference in our school community. Deb Paulson is a compassionate and dedicated educational specialist whose steady presence and thoughtful contributions have made a meaningful difference at Bound Brook High School. Through her leadership of Red Ribbon Week, coordinating the Think Fast Interactive Presentation on Substance Abuse, she brings creativity and purpose to promoting student wellness using engaging activities, daily messages, and school-wide participation to spark important conversations around health and decision-making. As the advisor of the Pride Club, Deb fosters a culture of acceptance and inclusion, helping all students feel valued and supported. She is especially gifted at building genuine trusting relationships with students, offering them a safe space to be heard and understood. Always willing to step in and support her colleagues, Deb is a reliable and respected member of the school community. Her leadership, care for students, and commitment to creating a positive school environment make her a strong and deserving recipient of this recognition. Deb, you too are limitless, and congratulations on this prestigious honor. Congratulations to the both of you.
Let's have another round of applause for all of our Educator and Support People of the Year. Okay, before we move on to taking our picture, our group picture, what I would like to do, I want to recognize another group of people, not necessarily to call them up for award, but to recognize them for a tremendous accomplishment that they achieved in the last couple of weeks. For those of you who haven't seen the Instagram posts, recently, our Board of Education was chosen by the Somerset County School Boys Association was chosen by the Somerset County School Boards Association to receive the Carol E. Larson Master Board Certification, the highest distinction a board can achieve. This is an extraordinary honor, as only 5% of the boards across the state reach this level of achievement. So I'd like to give them a big round of applause. Them receiving the award was only fitting because I've never seen a board that's so dedicated, committed to the community, and so engaged. So it's only fitting that they received this award and are placed in the top 5% of the Boards of Education in the state. Now, in addition to that award we received that night, there were two other recognitions. One was for Board Member Danny Minhas, who earned his new Board Membership Certification, a key milestone for him in being an effective board governance. So we'd have a round of applause for him. He didn't expect that, that's why he's blushing. And, and next, our fearless leader, our Board President, Rich Januzzi. He was selected as the President of the Somerset County School Board Association. So not only will he be our president, but he'll be president for the county. I think that deserves a big round of applause. So, and to the board, on behalf of the community, the teachers, the staff, we're incredibly proud of your, your leadership, your dedication, and we appreciate the example you set for our community. Okay, at this time, would all of the Parents and Students of the Month please come up to the stage to take a picture? If I could ask the Educators of the Year to stay, I'd like to get a picture with you as well. So all the Students of the Month and parents, you can come on up. So you, Mike, you want to do it on the floor or the stage? Stage? Yeah, let's move this out of the way. Mike? They go down, they take the picture down. Can you get it? Okay, if we could have the Teachers of, Educators of the Year come up front? Mike, Mike, where would you rather have them? Huh? Where would you rather have the Educators of the Year? On the stage, up there? Okay, Educators of the Year, if you would please come forward with your trophies, with your trophies. Educators of the Year, up to the stage, please. Mike, direct them up to the stage. Yeah, it's too, it's too busy down there. Too busy. Let's see if we can take the trophies out and hold them. And we'll go right up front here.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
How are you? Congrats, congratulations, everybody. There is one thing.
You know, I, this year that I got the Governor's Award, you know, my district gave me? I got a certificate, wait, I got a certificate, a black and white piece of paper. And an announcement. Last year, they gave out a Golden App. Figured it out.
What's that?
LLD teacher.
Who was, who was this? Oh, Sid? Yeah, I love her. She, she's. Yeah. And let me tell you, she's really good. She takes kids who really have issues and they.
I think everybody who is intending to leave has likely left. There you go. So let's go ahead and move on to item three point one. Just, I want to acknowledge that while our student board member was unable to be with us this evening, he did send in some written reports, both from last month and from this month. So if you haven't already checked those out on the agenda, they were late adds. Uh, please feel free to do that after the meeting and, uh, send any questions that you have to Harrison. I'm sure he'd be happy to answer. That moves us to committee reports. We'll start with education. Mr. Dawson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Januzi. We had a great education meeting a couple of weeks ago. Um, some exciting news. Uh, the district was recently evaluated in our preschool program. Um, a lot of folks, if you, um, are not deeply involved in education, you could easily have the, uh, misconception that preschool is easy and all play. Um, but it is not. Um, it's, uh, they're our, our youngest earners. It's their first experience in the district. So we were all, uh, really relieved to know that one of the many bodies that governs preschool education in New Jersey gave us a lot of, uh, really affirming, uh, validation in our programming, our curriculum, our approach, the way we enroll kids. Um, and also, um, saw some areas that we also think are promising places where we can, um, continue growing and expanding the program and making future investments. So we were really excited about, uh, that news and all the work that's being done by our staff, our administrators, um, in the preschool programming. Lots of good things coming, uh, from that program. We also talked about, uh, the COGA administration. So COGA is an assessment that we can use to identify students who may be gifted or talented. Um, and we were really excited about the results. The results show that we're, um, having a broader way to identify kids who, um, maybe have not been identified before. Um, kids who may be multilingual learners, kids who may have, um, a learning disability or an IEP, um, kids who may need a 504 plan. Um, a lot of those kids have a lot of talents and the deeper we look at them, the deeper we can, uh, nurture those talents. So we were excited about those results. Um, all promising things from, uh, education.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Dawson. Any questions for the education committee? All right, hearing none. Ms. Hi, not to put you on the spot, but since Mr. Bow is not here, would you mind doing an update for governance?
Uh, I'll tell you in a second.
Totally fine. I know I'm going out of order, but perhaps we could have Mr. Zupko do operations.
Yeah, I could throw it to me. That's fine. Okay, well, operations was an exciting committee. We talked about a lot of different things. One of the things we spoke about, which affects, um, going forward is going to affect some of our student body, was the, uh, photos, the photo service, legacy studios, about yearbook services, photo services. We, uh, that was brought up and added to the agenda. And what we needed to talk about was, uh, basically looking at, you know, the bang for the buck, the, the pricing, uh, compared to last year. I know my son is a senior and the prices were, um, kind of high. So, uh, we just want to make it equitable for everybody when they, uh, because it's a special time of year and we want all of our parents and our students, uh, to enjoy, uh, uh, pictures that they're going to have for a lifetime. So, uh, we kind of went into that a little bit. We also talked about updates. We're excited to talk about the renovations for the weight room and new equipment. Uh, that was to go into the weight room. Um, there were a number of different types of equipment that were put in, are going to be put in. Uh, I know that when I spoke to, uh, Mr. Gorski, uh, the, uh, old equipment, we will, uh, make sure that it is safe and, uh, and, and when we dispose of it, or if we could recycle it, whatever the case may be. Um, the installation, they're expecting to, uh, you know, uh, be really quick, uh, put in there as repairs need to be done, painting. So the weight room is really going to look nice. Uh, Mr. Gorski, do you have any additions you want to add to that or Dr. Freeman?
No, sir, I think you've covered it well.
Okay. So the, and that's exciting because that's another issue that, um, you know, that's, I, I like to say things like that, you know, uh, not a, a pun towards what we're talking about, but that's a legacy issue. So we have a weight room that will be enjoyed, not just for, you know, the students now, but for the students in the future. And I want to thank, the board wants to thank the administrative team for really getting behind that. Uh, because I see, and I, uh, it's, it's, it's such an important, when, you know, our kids work out and they're really trying hard, they're performing to do the best they can. And we want them to know that we support them, um, you know, to have the right equipment. So that was really, really exciting. Also talked about the bidding of custodial services. Bidding took place on Tuesday, 29th of April. We had seven bidders that bid on the contractual services. The lowest was SJ Services that won a bid at nine 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 three six. That's nine hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred thirty-six dollars. Um, do you, Mr. Gorski, you want to go a little bit into that or, because there were some specifics I know that you knew?
There, there are some developments that are, um, still materializing with that, but we are making the, uh, recommendation for the bid to be awarded tonight to SJ and we'll take it from there.
Okay. So that's something that's, uh, you know, that'll be really comprehensive for next year. We also talked about lunches, uh, the school lunches for, uh, this year for next year. Um, apparently, you know, we've been doing really well. Lunch prices are to remain the same for all schools. Um, we talked about, uh, how to, uh, improve or, you know, look at what we are currently serving. I know depending, you know, there, we, we were joking in the committee, like depending upon the school, yeah, well, they'll have a different viewpoint of their lunch. Now, the high school may feel a certain way, you know, the middle school may feel a certain way. So we want to make sure that we are, um, giving, you know, again, the best, uh, possible items to all of our students and staff. Uh, and I know that that's something that, yeah, I'm excited to talk about because that's something that, again, will really help us out. Finally, there were two other items. The one was, um, I'm going to tread lightly in this because the, uh, about the, uh, we had a vendor complaint, uh, for gym padding. And I wanted to just make sure that we, you know, talked about that a little bit. But Dr. Freeman, would you like to?
Okay, sure. So the gentleman who was here a couple of months ago, we, uh, we did a thorough investigation of his, uh, claim and we came to the conclusion that, uh, there was some fault on both ends. So I brought it to the operations committee and what they explained was that they wanted to kind of, uh, take that into consideration. So we're able to negotiate a dollar amount with him. And that is on the board agenda tonight for approval. He agreed to it and it's on the agenda tonight for approval.
Thank you, Dr. Freeman. Finally, one of the last things, uh, were brought up was, was the sign in front of the high school. And we, uh, we're looking at the, we, we have the electronic sign, which is incredible. But we also have the other sign and the other sign's looking a little tired. So we're trying to put our heads together, uh, in relation to seeing the best approach to navigate, uh, uh, bringing the sign back to life and, 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 you know, sprucing it up a little bit. And, uh, I'm thankful that Dr. Freeman took this, uh, you know, as soon as I mentioned it, he took it right on, onto his, you know, his agenda. And, you know, we're starting to see some ideas come forward. Um, we want to make sure that it's something that, uh, you know, is going to be pleasing for everybody and aesthetically, uh, you know, pleasing to, you know, uh, the students as well. So, uh, we're, we're still looking into that. That's still in process. Other than that, I don't remember having anything else, but, uh, are there any questions for my committee? Please, you can let me know now. Otherwise, that's it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Zupko. Any questions on a rather full and complete operations committee meeting report? All right, hearing none. Ms. Hi, we'll double back to you for, let's do governance first.
So governance was surprisingly quick, our committee meetings. There really were two, two topics that, um, were discussed. One of the things that we have to do as a board is we, we self-evaluate where we are as a board. And the other thing is to do the superintendent evaluation. And, um, what we propose or what we will be doing is, um, receiving the, the information and each one of us separately then does an evaluation for, uh, for Dr. Freeman. Then we meet with him, we discuss the results and we go from there. This is something that we want done by our next meeting so that it's all done before our July 1st. Um, which then is, you know, we are in compliance with absolutely everything. CUSAC will be happy, everything, so it'll be good. The other topic that came up was, um, uh, cell phone policy. And that is something that we're looking into. We're investigating with other subjects. Dr. Freeman also has, you know, this has been a discussion at the superintendent's round table, but it is something that we are still looking at so that we can get a definitive policy and what best serves our schools. And that is it.
Well done. Thank you, Mrs. Hi. Any questions on governance? All right, hearing none. Sue, we'll stay with you for HR.
Okay, HR, busy time of year. It's a very busy time of year right now. Um, looking at open positions, if you look at the agenda, you'll see a lot of different things in, in personnel that are going on, um, staff who are returning, et cetera. Um, and this is like we always, every month we say the same thing. This is really a live document and it is ongoing and it is just filling positions. We mentioned at last month's board meeting that there was the, um, went to the colleges, went to, uh, Montclair and Kane and really for the college fair, really looking at applicants. And you will see that we have some new positions or new hires on for the next school year, which is wonderful because we want to get them sooner rather than later. So this is good news that we're working on that. The other, uh, another thing that happened within the district and all teachers have been informed just were transfer, transfers within the, um, district. We are looking at open enrollment dates, which end at the end of this month for medical. It's really for, uh, for dental. There are a lot of increases in staff with the dental program. We are also looking at the assistant superintendent position. And we have had a number of applicants, which is really nice to see, which will then be selected down to the, the top candidates. And that will be moving on. We're hoping to have that filled by this summer. And the last thing, which is an agenda item tonight, which is wonderful, but also sad, which is we have Mr. Gorski who has, is going on to bigger and, well, I don't want to say bigger and better, well, bigger and better things. He's spending a lot more time with his family and, and we are just so thankful for everything he has done for this district. Uh, yeah. It's hard to talk about this without getting emotional because he just is such a tremendous force. He is a voice of reason. He's calm. When things seem hectic, he's very organized. He's focused on what needs to be done. Um, a true gentleman. I think the worst thing I've heard him say is heck. And Michael. But just, um, what an asset to the Bound Brook School District. He will be sorely, sorely missed. So Michael, thank you so much for everything you've done for us.
All right, and before Ms. Hi cries anymore, any other questions for HR committee report? Oh, very well said. Okay. Um, I believe there's no report for SE ESC this meeting. Got it. So we are up to item four point six. Mr. Inkal Katera, anything from Southbound Brook?
At our last board meeting, we finalized the schedule for the roof to be repaired over the summer and the asbestos remediation of two of the classrooms, as is our ongoing project of two classrooms at a time so that it's not budget heavy. We also finalized a, we're, we decided to pilot a cell phone program that involves using Lexam cases in the front of the room where the student's cell phones would be stored so that they're still with the student, but out of the student's possession. That's about it.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Inkal Katera? All right, any final comments or questions for the committees in general? All right, we are up to item five point one. This is open to the public for agenda items only. I don't see any members of the public here to my knowledge, just the staff. So I believe we are ready to move on. Item six point one, be it resolved that the Bound Brook Board of Education, upon recommendation of the superintendent, approves the minutes for the following meetings, regular and executive meeting minutes for April 30th, 2025. Have a motion? Thank you, Ms. Hi. A second? Thank you, Mr. Zupko. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Gorski, a roll call, please.
Certainly. Mr. Dawson. Mr. Inkal Katera. Mr. Zupko. Thank you. Ms. Musin. Mr. Minhas. Thank you. Ms. Hi. Mr. Volmer. Mr. Januzi.
Yes, but before you close, I think we have to revisit Mr. Inkal Katera.
Epstein, so noted, thank you. Mr. Januzi, motion still passes.
Thank you, Mr. Gorski. Item seven point one, be it resolved that the superintendent recommends for approval the resolutions as outlined in district personnel resolutions. These are items seven point two through seven point forty-nine. Have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Dawson. A second from Mr. Inkal Katera. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dawson. Mr. Inkal Katera. Mr. Zupko. Ms. Musin. Mr. Minhas. Ms. Hi. Mr. Volmer. And Mr. Januzi.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item eight point one, be it resolved that the Bound Brook Board of Education approves the resolutions as outlined in district education resolutions. This is item eight point two through eight point nineteen. Have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Dawson. A second. Thank you, Mr. Inkal Katera. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. A roll call, please.
Mr. Dawson. Mr. Inkal Katera. Mr. Zupko. Ms. Musin. Mr. Minhas. Ms. Hi. Mr. Volmer. And Mr. Januzi.
Yes.
Mr. Volmer. And Mr. Januzzi.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item 9.1, be it resolved that the Bound Brook Board of Education approves the resolutions as outlined in board action resolutions. These are items 9.2 through 9.34. Have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Ms. Musin. A second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hi. Any discussion? All right, long. I'll just take a minute to acknowledge, I think Mr. Zupko already covered a bunch of items that are on the agenda that we're moving forward with. Some projects are really, really big, some projects are really on the smaller end, but I just want to thank specifically our technology department for some of the innovative ideas that you guys are bringing forward. They might not be big dollar changes, but they have a significant impact on the experience that our students and teachers and community members all have when they enter our facility. So thank you, guys, for continuing to push the envelope and start to raise the level of quality of our facilities. Any other comments or questions?
I would like to, please, to promise that we will be able to address any questions.
Well said. All right, unless there are any other comments. Mr. Gorski, a roll call, please.
Mr. Dawson.
Yes.
Mr. Inkal Katera.
Yes.
Mr. Zupko.
Yes.
Ms. Musin.
Yes.
Mr. Minhas.
Yes.
Ms. Hi.
Yes.
Mr. Volmer.
Yes.
And Mr. Januzzi.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We are up to other matters to come before the board, which I have not received. So we are on to item 11, which is new business. Any of the members want to raise or discuss anything at this time? Now, Ms. Hi.
I have quick, and it's kind of old new business, but just to let you know that the Alumni Association is moving forward with the trophy cases, and they're going to be meeting June 2nd. I think they already discussed with Berto. They're meeting to look at the old case and see what they're doing with the new case, but they're really excited about moving along with this. And also, interviews for scholarships are very soon, so we're just looking forward to that.
That's great. Thanks very much, Sue. Any other new business items? All right, we are open to the public for discussion, which, again, seeing no members of the public, we will move on to item 13.1, be it resolved that the Bound Brook Board of Education enter executive session as allowed by NJ SA 10:4-11 for the purposes listed in the agenda, including numbers 1 and 8.
So, Mr. Januzzi, just real quick, based on something that came up, I think we should add number 7 as well.
Thank you very much. So items 1, 7, and 8. May I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Inkal Katera. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Zupko. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned to executive. Okay. So, we are up to item 14.1. Be it resolved that the Bound Brook Board of Education Approves the Resolutions as outlined in Approval of HIB Cases Under High School. This is just item 14.2. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Incautara. Mr. Gorsky, a roll call, please.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Item 15.1. Be it resolved that the Bound Brook Board of Education Approves the Resolutions as outlined in Approval of HIB Cases Under Middle and Elementary Schools. This is item 15.2. May I have a motion? Thank you, Mrs. Hi. A second? Thank you, Ms. Musson. Mr. Gorsky, a roll call.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. We have now exhausted the agenda, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Mr. Dawson. A second from Mrs. Hi. Any... Oh, all in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.